...in any past meetings, I know you might not know how to act as mayor and Mr. Duran here is helping you, but Robert Booth says you can't be whispering or that's why you guys have mics. This is a public meeting, not to socialize with you guys. Thank you.
Mayor, those were all our speakers.
Moving on to item number five, excuse absent council members.
Mayor, that should be all of the talk presented.
Item number six, approval of regular council meeting minutes of September 21st, 2017. Item number seven, approval of cash receipt transaction report for August 2017. And item number eight, approval of accounts payable transaction report for August 2017.
Can I make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Mr. Perez.
The absent council member did provide an excuse or didn't inform. Is it the absent?
Rene Rodriguez is absent. Maria Reyes.
Yes.
Ralph Duran.
Yes.
Victor Perez.
Aye.
Ivan Colombia-Lobos.
Yes.
Mayor.
Mr. Duran.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to move items number eighteen, nineteen, and twenty right before item number nine. We have people here that are just here to be approved and that way they don't have to stay here all night long.
Second.
Rene Rodriguez is absent. Maria Reyes.
Yes.
Ralph Duran.
Yes.
Victor Perez.
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia-Lobos.
Yes.
Item number eighteen, discussion and action to rename Southeast Lake to rename Council Truces or Waco Tanks Parkway, Nuevo Waco Tanks or New Waco Tanks. Mr. Duran.
Okay, I brought this, it was brought to, at the last meeting and because of the way that it was placed on the agenda, we couldn't really pick a name. That's why I brought it back to, I gave some names that we could use and then if we come up with a better name between all of us here, I think we do need to maintain the identity of Socorro. I think we need to maintain who we are and Old Waco Tanks, if we can incorporate even a little bit of that name, I think that will keep Socorro Socorro and not have to be an extension of Horizon City. We'll be our own little town with our own little street names and that way when somebody hears any of these street names, they'll know exactly where it is. Thank you.
Ms. Reyes.
Yes, I apologize for not having submitted my suggestion, but with the attorney's approval, I want to go ahead and make a suggestion or amendment to the motion that if we could go ahead and just try one of the names would be Waco Tanks Ivy Expressway.
I'm sorry, one more time.
It would be Waco Tanks Ivy Expressway.
Expressway. Waco Tanks Expressway.
Expressway, mhm.
Was that?
Mr. Duran.
Was that Waco Tanks Ivy Expressway? Mr. Ivy, would you have any objection to your name being used on there? Wait, wait, hold on, I think, hold on, I think we cannot use any name of a living person.
His father or his. Ben, 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 the Holland.
I appreciate that and I think, you know, with the development that we're doing in the whole area, there'll be lots of opportunity to probably name some of our ancestors in that. I think like Moon Road is really named after my great-grandfather, so we have some identity there too, so, but I appreciate that, I mean, that's whatever name close to Old Waco, I think Waco Tanks ought to be the main emphasis, in my opinion. Waco Tanks ought to be the main emphasis to draw. What it's going to do also is going to bring a lot of people that's coming down to America's Avenue, it's going to help split those traffic to come and make a better way to access down in here and I just think Waco Tanks Road has its own identity and if we can just add to that, that's just my feeling, but thank you very much.
You're more than welcome to. It was just an idea that I had, but you know, I appreciate your suggestion or you know, your future, that you're going to name a maybe the streets with a developer or whatever else, but I still like the Waco Tanks Expressway.
So you're amending your motion to?
I, motion to go ahead and amend my motion to go ahead and change it to Waco Tanks Expressway.
Ms. Villalobos.
I'm sorry. Did anybody research any council, why we could not change the name last time? Mr. Martinez? Why, why in?
I didn't.
You didn't, okay.
I didn't answer the question.
Right.
I didn't do the research.
I, Ms. Reyes, I understand, it was when you were sick, Mr. Martinez, Mr. Burko Back is the one that took over that meeting.
Yeah, but I think the issue was if the names council wanted to consider, we're not having on the agenda along with other things.
Right, and that's why it was tabled or denied and then we were bringing it back now at this time.
Okay, great, thank you. No, I believe we should keep our identity, I 100% agree with that, we should keep our own identity and if it's not a problem with, with the neighbors or anybody's address, you know, why not?
I'll second that. Your motion.
Mayor, we do have a speaker. Daniel Hernandez. Can we ask why Expressway?
Mr. Perez.
I, I know that the Expressway shows that we're progressing, but if you look at the nicer historical areas that you see like in Nuevo Mexico, you see Enzando Fe, you see the names still with the Spanish naming and to me, I would, I would like to see it in its my own two cents, Nuevo Waco Tanks, because that way it's still, you still, I mean, Waco by definition isn't Spanish and so Nuevo would just be, to me just makes logical sense in the naming, but also I think it preserves that, that colonial aspect that we have in this area, just.
Ms. Villalobos.
What is, what is with tanks, does that mean something? I mean, I'm sorry, I've been here 15 years, I really, do tanks mean something? What does it mean, Mr.?
Mr. Duran.
If you've ever been out to Waco Tanks, there's huge holes in the rock where there was, water would accumulate if I'm not, if I'm correct on that and that's why when travelers were coming through, they knew that there would be water there and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Ivy, but that is why it was there, because there was, that was a common watering spot and Waco, I guess, meant that a lot of times they were empty. That, so.
The reason I ask is because I think it would confuse people because we do have a Waco Tanks, you know, mountain estates out in Waco Tanks, so I was thinking maybe we could just drop the tanks and just say Nuevo. Nuevo Waco.
You had to think about it, okay, well, I think Expressway because what, we have now the easy on and easy off and they understand it's going to be different than the one that we have right now and think it would distinguish it, maybe in the future, like Mr. Ivy said, you know, they might change it, win that subdivision and add the names in, but I kind of like, we're going to keep the Waco and the Tanks for that reason, but I like the way the Expressway, in and out, which is what the purpose of it was for.
Mr. Perez.
Well, couldn't we just put Nuevo for Tanks Expressway?
I'm sorry?
Come again.
Nuevo Waco Tanks Expressway.
You want to make amendment to the motion?
That's what you had said, right, after you took off the ID.
I'm sorry?
That's what you had said after we took off the ID.
No.
The one was Waco Tanks Expressway.
Yeah. Waco Tanks Expressway.
Oh, okay.
We could add the Nuevo, Waco Tanks Expressway.
That sounds good.
Then I would need to make amendment to my motion. Motion to amend and name the street is, let's see, to rename Southeast Lake, Nuevo Waco Tanks Expressway.
Mayor, may I have one more thing?
I can't tell you for certain, but the idea is, our informal agreement with Tech Dot is that someday they're going to take this street over, it's not going to be a city street, it's going to go on to Tech Dot's system, which saves us money in terms of maintenance. I don't know, but it just occurs to me that they, they have a hierarchy for their certain names that they can use for certain kinds of roads and certain names that they can't. The name, the underlying name, Nuevo Waco Tanks, I don't think would pose an issue, it's the word Expressway that makes me worried, boulevard, street, calle, whatever, I don't think they worry about any of that, but I think in their world, Expressway means, has a specific meaning, all of that is a long way of saying, it makes, I'd hate to, for that to be an impediment to them taking it over or for them to say at some later date, well, we'll take it over as long as you pay the cost for us changing the signage and removing Expressway, although that is a long way of saying, a mild suggestion is maybe omit Expressway because that's a potential issue.
Your suggestion was what, sir?
Omit Expressway because it might create an issue for Tech Dot, it might affect their willingness to take over the, to accept that road onto their system eventually and the terms on which they'll do that.
Mr. Ivy.
If I, if I might, I appreciate it and Mr. Martinez is right, there is a hierarchy of streets as they progress, like there's streets, roads, boulevards, like Horizon Boulevard and then Parkway is kind of the next highest after that and then Expressway is like a full-fledged freeway type thing and so I noticed you have on here, Waco Tanks Parkway is one of the things that, that somebody has looked at, that might be something that might work instead of, Expressway might, I don't, I don't think Tech Dot will have a problem, I mean, they might, but the hierarchy of streets is usually, it's roads, streets, boulevard, and then parkways and we plan to, as developing all that stuff, to have as much of a park scene with parks and trees and heavily landscaped Parkway and so that might be something that you might want to consider also. And then also the history of Waco Tanks Road, it used to be the route from Socorro all the way up to Waco Tanks Road and people did way back in those days picnic also, but in Waco Tanks, but they also used it for, to go get the salt, the salt wars from San Lázaro, they used that same route that went up there to get to the salt flats up there too, so it's got a lot of historical significance on the way, the reason it's called Old Waco Tanks Road.
Thank you. Anybody else have a suggestion other than, we can go with Waco Tanks Parkway?
I.
Mr. Duran.
I think we need to, like Mr. Perez said, keep some Spanish in it, Nuevo Waco Tanks Parkway.
Okay.
I think, I think that would keep everybody happy. Mr. Martinez, is there any problem with Parkway?
It's upon the.
There might be because I'm not sure, it's the same issue.
Yeah.
But I think it's one step in the right direction, that's certainly less likely to create conflict with Tech Dot than Expressway.
Okay, if we, if we make it Boulevard, that's the same as Horizon.
Drive.
That, yeah, that might, that might.
Would that be the safest bet?
Probably.
So in other words, if we, if we just name it Nuevo Waco Tanks Boulevard, we're safe from Tech Dot, we've maintained the integrity of the city of Socorro and we've incorporated both Spanish and English into the naming of the street.
Ms. Reyes, would you amend your motion?
To Nuevo Tanks.
Nuevo Waco Tanks.
Boulevard.
Boulevard.
Mr. Martinez, we have to include the Boulevard or can we just leave it at Nuevo Waco Tanks?
I think you can do the latter, I mean, you don't have to designate it a Boulevard, a street, place, court, whatever.
I amend my motion to just go ahead and name, rename Southeast Lake to Nuevo Waco Tanks.
I'll second that.
Rene Rodriguez is absent. Maria Reyes.
Yes.
Ralph Duran.
Yes.
Victor Perez.
Aye.
Ivan Colombia-Lobos.
Yes.
Item number nineteen, discussion and action on approval to appoint Pablo Barrera to the Ethics Review Commission. Mr. Duran.
I make a motion to approve Pablo Barrera to the Ethics Review Commission.
Second.
And we have a speaker, Daniel Hernandez.
Is the gentleman here?
Rene Rodriguez is absent. Maria Reyes. I abstain. Ralph Duran.
Yes.
Victor Perez.
I don't know much about it, but if, if he's willing to volunteer and come up, that's fine. Aye.
Ivan Colombia-Lobos.
Yes.
Item number twenty, throwing in of newly appointed commissioner.
Mayor, before we proceed, I just wanted to let you know on item eighteen, we do have to have the classification for the street, Tech Dot requires it, so it'll be Boulevard.
Technically, it's not part of the name.
It's just.
It's kind of like Montana Avenue, the name of Montana Avenue is Montana, it happens to be classified as an avenue. I guess it's for, it's designated like that for mapping purposes.
Exactly, we have to.
We have.
It needs a classification.
Minor arterials, major arterial. Just so you know.
Item number nine, public hearing of an ordinance changing the zoning of track four D one, block one, Socorro Grant at 1069 Coker Road, changed from ER Rural Estates to M one Light Industrial. 636 Public Hearing is now open. 636 Public Hearing is now closed. Item number ten, second reading and adoption of an ordinance changing the zoning of tract four D one, block one, Socorro Grant at 1069 Coker Road, changed from RE Rural Estates to M one Light Industrial.
Motion to deny as per staff recommendation.
Second. Make motion to approve, you said, deny. Mayor, we have a speaker signed up, Daniel Hernandez.
To dinner. Ms. Reyes, you said it, the motion to approve or deny?
To dinner.
Okay.
Rene Rodriguez is absent. Maria Reyes.
Yes.
Ralph Duran.
Yes.
Victor Perez.
Aye.
Ivan Colombia-Lobos.
Yes.
Item number eleven, discussion and action on approving the unaudited financial reports for August 2017.
Make a motion to approve the unaudited financial reports for August 2017.
I'm sorry, what was the motion? Ms. Reyes, can you repeat your motion?
I'm sorry? I make a motion to approve the undated financial report for August 2017.
Second.
And we have a speaker, Daniel Hernandez. Rene Rodriguez is absent. Maria Reyes.
Yes.
Ralph Duran.
Yes.
Victor Perez.
Aye.
Ivan Colombia-Lobos.
No.
Item number twelve, discussion and action to authorize the city of Socorro to submit a contract amendment to the Texas Department of Agriculture, amending the scope of work and contract term to complete Phase Two of Sparks Arroyo Improvement Project under CDBG Contract Number 721-470.
Motion to approve the amendment to the contract between the city of Socorro and the Texas Department of Agriculture, amending the scope of work.
Second.
Mayor.
Ms. Reyes.
I have a question, it says here the overall length of improvement for Phase Two is based entirely on the reming budget, but we have enough to complete that project with 157,000?
Yes, yes ma'am, and we do have the engineer CSA that can provide you the actual changes.
Good evening, Council, Adrian Antimados was CSA designer, I'm here to answer your questions, yes, the remaining budget is allocated directly to construction, we will limit the length basically of the channel based on that budget, so, we have enough funds available, unless the city would like to fund more, but what's remaining is what will be built.
What's remaining is what?
What, the amount of funds that are available is what we will construct, so we are looking at, I think, about 300 feet of channel on one side, the main reason for that is because there are homes, do you want me to show you an exhibit?
Yes, please, please.
Yes, please.
So, the amendment, so what we're trying to do is, instead of carrying it this way, we're doubling up on that side where the homes are at, that way it protects a little bit more of the homes on that side of the Arroyo and they'll show you, they'll show you that.
As a reinforcement?
I'm sorry?
As a reinforcement?
Yes.
Okay, so basically, we were similar to what we were saying, we were denying the concrete channel that was in place today, we had some lanes left over, we were again contracted to continue and build wherever we can with the remaining budget, we're proposing is a gabion channel type system, which is just rock filled, iron mesh cages, basically, our main concern, of course, is public safety, meaning that the homes are located on the Alamo Banks Channel, water tanks, one of us drink, and in doing so, it starts erosion of that side of the channel, so our main concern is the safety of the public, homes, properties on that side of that channel, therefore, we're proposing with available money, since we can construct about 300 million feet of that gabion channel system, only on the other end, the reason being is because if we would opt for the wood side, we wouldn't get the benefit.
Probably 150, 150 on each.
So you're literally shoring up the, that other side, you're basically.
And it's not going to be concrete because concrete makes the water go faster, so it's perfect, the concrete, because it's closer to the I-10 and it, under the culverts, that's what it's meant for, but further down, we have to go with that mesh because it percolates better and it slows down the water.
Yeah, and this, this, you know, this channel is, well, you can't blame entirely on the people who do this downstream, these culverts, they flow forward, so when it does happen, and it does erode this side out, with this gabion system, it will slow down the water, it will, it will aid with controlling the erosion on that side, and when funds are available in the future, we can continue constructing on the other side and hopefully concrete goes to the water. But it's going to slow down the water.
On the 300, that is going to be enough to cover that particular phase only until the next time around, that we're going to be doing a Phase Three possibly?
Yes, that's the objective, every time that there's funding available, we go ahead, we go ahead and apply and we already have it through phases.
To the existing.
Correct, this is the first phase, however, there was money that was left over, so we requested an amendment and, and they allowed us an extension, so that's what we're proposing with that money left over, that we continue with a mesh to protect those homes.
Mm-hmm.
Because the sand is like really close to those homes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Rene Rodriguez is absent. Maria Reyes.
Yes.
Ralph Duran.
Yes.
Victor Perez.
Aye.
Ivan Colombia-Lobos.
Yes.
Item number thirteen, discussion and action on the proposed amendment to the city of Socorro master plan and rezoning of tract four D 11A, block three, Socorro Grant from C two, general commercial to M one light industrial to establish a storage facility.
Motion.
Motion.
Motion to deny ba, based on staff recommendation.
Second. And we did have a speaker, Daniel Hernandez. Rene Rodriguez is absent. Maria Reyes.
Yes.
Ralph Duran.
Yes.
Victor Perez.
Aye.
Ivan Colombia-Lobos.
Yes.
Item number fourteen, discussion and action on the proposed amendment to the city of Socorro master plan and rezoning of tract one A one, Lee Clark Survey, two nine three, A B S T, six two five seven, at 1113 Horizon Boulevard, from C two, general commercial to M two, heavy industrial for a trailer repair shop.
Motion to accept the recommendation from staff with a denial.
Second.
Daniel Hernandez. Rene Rodriguez is absent. Maria Reyes.
Yes.
Ralph Duran.
Yes.
Victor Perez.
Aye.
Ivan Colombia-Lobos.
Yes.
Item number fifty.
I'm sorry.
Ms. Reyes, I have a question.
It says here that a citation was issued, is there any way that we can attach the citation to see how many times have either been given a NOV or anything to that extent so that we have that information or what type of violation?
Okay.
Then we can go ahead and use that as the, as a backup as well?
Or item number fourteen?
Well, any future that has any NOVs, if you would please, thank you.
Item number fifteen, discussion and action for. Item number 15, discussion and action for approval of basa subdivision final plan being all of Track 6A, 6B1A, 6B1B, and 7, Block 18, Socorro Grant, located at 550 Olgin Road.
Motion to approve Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation of approval to allow the residents to establish ownership.
Second, sorry.
Discussion. Mr. Perez?
And, I know that the staff recommended this, but if, if you go, if you travel in that area, that's a very small area. The, the Egress and the Egress, the, the roads are kind of narrow, right? And so, I'm having a little bit of a hard time. I, I'm all for progress, but the, but Olgin Road is very narrow, and I just want to find out what accommodations will be made to, to, what accommodations will be made to accommodate the influx of traffic.
According to the information that the applicant provided us, they're not going to change anything. They're only asking for the lot split, because if you look at the way the property is right now.
Okay.
They have a house in there.
Right.
And it, there, I guess there's a, there's two brothers who have different opinions. One of them wants to use the vacant land that you see on the side as agricultural land. The other one disagrees, so they are just trying to subdivide the property, so that they, they have their own land each. That was the reason why they requested the lot split. They're not going to change the driveways, they're not going to change the roadways, they're going to keep the land as it is, and the portion of land that's being used as agricultural is going to be continued, used as agricultural.
All right, thank you for the clarification.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Daniel Hernandez? Rene Rodriguez is absent, Maria Reyes?
Yes.
Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
Ivan Colombia loves.
Yes.
Item number 16, discussion and action for approval of Aldama Estates Re-Plan B, being all of Lot 7, Block 6, Aldama Estates, located at 196 Midnight Sun.
Motion to approve the Planning and Zoning Commission's approval to allow the residents to establish ownership of the prospective land. The same applies, we're ju, we're not changing anything else, just splitting the land. Exactly.
And we used to use that amendment briefly, but we changed it for.
Yes, ma'am.
Thanks. Daniel Hernandez? Rene Rodriguez is absent, Maria Reyes?
Yes.
Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
Ivan Colombia loves.
Yes.
Item number 17, discussion and action for approval to waive the event permit fee for the San Felipe de Jesús Catholic Church event on Track 20A1, Socorro Grant, Block 13, located at 401 Pasmar Road.
Motion to approve the permit, uh, fee waiver, for the San Felipe de Jesús Catholic Church event.
Second.
Second.
Daniel Hernandez? Rene Rodriguez is absent, Maria Reyes?
Yes.
Ralph Duran?
Mayor?
Mr. Duran?
Mr. Perez, I think you want to add to your motion with the condition that the organizer provides traffic control plan?
No.
That was not in your original motion. That way, we don't have to worry about, uh, they can coordinate with our police department, make sure there's a good traffic flow, and nobody gets hurt.
So, I'll go ahead and amend my motion to approve the fee, the permit fee waiver, and for the church to submit a traffic control plan for the event, and coordinate with our city police.
Rene Rodriguez is absent, Maria Reyes?
Yes.
Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
Ivan Colombia loves.
Yes.
Mr. Martinez?
I'm sorry?
Do we, nothing, we're executive?
Aye.
Make a motion to delete 21, 22, and 23?
Motion, second, rather.
Rene Rodriguez is absent, Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
Ivan Colombia loves.
Yes.
Motion to adjourn?
There's no, it's a motion to adjourn, we can adjourn.
Wow, look at the time.
It's on the agenda.
It's a record.
We can never adjourn.
Second.
Thank you.
Rene Rodriguez is absent, Maria Reyes?
Yes.
Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
Ivan Colombia loves.
Yes.
61, 651, meeting adjourned.
Oh, my gosh. It's a record, that is a record. So, this is what this feels like.